All right, good afternoon. I show it is 12 o'clock, so I will hereby call this Agenda Review Meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is present. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lea Beth Ab.
Here.
The Reverend James Urban.
Here.
Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Here.
And Mr. Farshid Nairmon.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us today. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be given that opportunity. If you would like to provide comment for a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted policies and procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties that we may experience. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. As a reminder, this is an agenda review meeting. No action will be taken today. Right, that takes us to item two on our agenda, public comment. We did not receive any requests to address the board today. So we'll move on to item three, Agenda Review, the Consent Agenda. The first item, our board meeting minutes. Did anybody have any comments, questions on the board meeting minutes?
No.
With that, we will move to item B, Business Office Reports. Ms. Barbara.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, board members, Superintendent Trahill. I would like to present my board reports to you, beginning with the budget amendments. And I believe that is on page 17. The first budget amendment is just trying to true up some budget numbers. You know, when we prepare a budget at the beginning of the year, it's the estimate. And so I am needing an additional about $22,300 in Function 21, and I'm taking it from Function 34. All right. And then, item B, redistribute between salary accounts to budget. So when we move to the DSC, we are... They're not truly new positions, but they haven't been filled this year. And we knew they wouldn't be filled for a while, so I held off on them. A receptionist position for the whole DSC, and then a clerical receptionist position for the Teaching and Learning Department. Item C, Budget Funds Received for Football Playoff Games and Associated Expenses. Again, this is a monthly deal. We receive money in, and it's associated expenses for playoff games. Budget D, Move Funds for General Supplies for Dona Elementary. They've asked to move funds from Function 23 to Function 23 from Function 13 to buy supplies. Function E is adjusting our TRS on behalf. This is a paper-only entry that we have to, we are required to do for accounting purposes, and it increases our revenue as well as the same amount of expenses. Any questions on the budget amendments? All right, hearing none. I can move on to Gifts and Donations, which begin on page 23. We received the donations listed, $200 in cash, as well as tennis rackets and classroom pillow sets. Any questions on donations? All right, hearing none. I'll move on to the Investment Report. Again, our earnings are dismal, but we are still earning. Nothing odd or different going on here. Any questions on the Investment Report? All right. And then, any other questions on the other reports that I provided?
I have two questions. And it's really, you know me, I'm just curious. And so I was wondering if you or probably Dr. Hill could tell me about, on December 8th, the little over $2,600 charge to Newhouse Education Center? I'm assuming that's some kind of training, and I was just curious as to what it was.
Who was it due?
Newhouse. Newhouse Education.
Oh, Newhouse.
No, I'm sorry.
So, yes, ma'am, it's a combination of training as well as instructional materials, and it's our phonics program that we use at the early literacy grades.
Right. Well, that's encouraging. And the other one is probably similar, and that's on December 15th, Lauren Michelle Smith, it was professional services, and I was wondering, was she a consultant or a trainer or something that you don't know anything about that?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that one.
I would have to look that up.
Okay. It's no biggie again, it's just my curiosity. I'd like to see where we're, you know...
And who was the vendor again?
Lauren Michelle Smith. It's December 15th, and it's just a little over $2,800.
All right, any other questions about the Business Office Reports? All right, hearing none, we'll move to item C, Purchases Over $25,000. Item one is CDWG, Access Points. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trahill. Administration is proposing to purchase 490 Meraki access points to upgrade our wireless equipment across the district. Let it be noted that the budget impact would be $42,676,067 cents. And this comes as a result of an E-Rate application that we applied for last year and was approved. So the district is getting these access points at a 15% or an 85% discount. President, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Martin, on a page following that request, it said code confirmation, and it comes down, it says grand total $294,409, $99.99. What does it stand for? It's page 85.
Page 85, let me get there, Coach. Okay, you were saying the grand total is $284,490?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's the invoice, but the request is for $42,676, yeah.
Okay, and Coach, that's because the district received E-Rate funding for this, for these access points. And it is, it comes at an 85% discount to us, to the district. So the district's portion of the total amount of $284,400 is $42,676.
Thank you, I was very clear now.
Yes, okay.
I might add that this, this is a tremendous opportunity. If you hear the language that's being shared at the, at TEA and at the state level, by 2022, they're hoping that we can get to online testing. That's the conversation, that's the dialogue. And with that comes the tremendous cost and responsibility to districts. So we need to take advantage of every possible thing that we can, using the expertise of Kirsten and her staff, and coordinating that so that we can build and continue to build a very robust system so down the road, it doesn't wind up taxing our resources. So we're continuing to look at opportunities that we can forecast and be a little more proactive with the needs that we have so that we can not only support the devices we have, that we've just kind of exponentially grown in the last few months, but what will happen in the next year or so as we have these initiatives, sometimes funded and sometimes not funded, initiatives that work toward developing the instruction for our kids.
Dr. Trahill, I see this as another important step, as we've hit this one-to-one threshold, and I know a lot of students are actually now using devices one-to-one in the classroom, so this should greatly enhance our ability to support that, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Matter of fact, working with Kirsten and Michael, and we've, we had a little bit of a lag there for a little while, because once everything started hitting the network and we've, we had to do some, some kind of looking, vetting, identifying, and it's tremendous effort. I, a big applaud goes to Kirsten and her staff for really paying attention to that. And that's what we need to do. We need to be proactive, and this is an example of a very proactive measure that we have because, understanding all of the devices that the kids carry on them, their personal devices, they're hitting the network. We have current systems that hit the network. We have the new iPads and the new Chromebooks hitting the networks, and it's really putting a lot of stress on our network with that, and that's why it's great to have places that can, can have some seamlessness in our connectivity as we move throughout the organization. Absolutely, Ms. Finch.
Well, and I appreciate the staff's proactiveness and we're able to get this, this new technology in here, and our share's 15%. I mean, what a great deal.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions on the item C1? Hearing none, we'll move to discussion on C2, CDWG, Microsoft Renewal. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch. Again, the administration is proposing to renew the yearly Microsoft software licenses for the district. And it goes on our district-owned device. What this is, is a client access license. Many of our devices use Microsoft Server, Active Directory, Windows 10, Microsoft Office. So this is an all-inclusive package for those, for the licensing or the usage of our end users, which includes teachers, staff, students, everyone who uses Microsoft products.
Questions regarding this item? Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
Item C D is, I'm sorry, item D, I apologize. Item D, looking at the wrong sheet of paper. Proclamation 2021, List of Instruction Materials Adopted by the State Board of Education. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, and good afternoon, President Fitch, board members, and Superintendent Trahill. Proclamation 2021 is basically a textbook adoption, and this year we are adopting both English and Spanish versions of pre-kindergarten materials. We do have a pre-kindergarten committee that has been meeting quite regularly to review all of the existing and adopted by SBOE materials. I am pleased to let you guys know that they have narrowed it down to the top three. This year was a little different for TEA. Instead of textbooks, vendors sending out hard copies of books, they allowed us to review them electronically. So when a committee has narrowed it down to three, we have ordered samples, and they are actually right outside the boardroom door so that the committee can come over and have an opportunity to look at them, an actual paper-based, if that makes sense. We did narrow it down from the samples of English and Spanish, since we serve both populations here in our district. These materials are set to go in the classroom for the 21, 22 instructional year, and then we would be using our instructional materials allotment fund to purchase these. And so our next steps would be, once those three have been narrowed down to one, of course, we'll bring that expenditure back at a subsequent board meeting, because I feel reasonably sure it will be an expenditure that's over the $25,000 threshold.
Any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, we'll move to item E, Adoption of an Order and Notice Calling for Board of Trustees Election for District Four and District Five on May the 1st. Dr. Trahill.
Yes, ma'am. What we've done is, visiting with Holly, the notices will be placed there for our current location. We want to make sure on this action item that our community knows that the, the order of election in English is posted as well as Spanish for all members of the community. In accordance to the Board Policy and Text Education Code, the election for the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees will be held on May the 1st, 2021, at the Nacogdoches County Courthouse Annex Building located at 203 West Main Street. From 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., early voting by personal appearance will be held at the Nacogdoches County Courthouse, an annex located at 203 West Main Street, beginning on Monday, April 19th, 2021, through Friday, April 23rd, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily. And on April 26th, 2021, and April 27th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Board positions to be filled in this election are District Trustee District Four, Position Six. Current incumbent is Dr. Tyrell Gromon. And trustee District Five, Position Seven, incumbent Mindy Winslow. The first day to file an application for a place of the ballot was January 13th, 2021, and the last day to file for a place at the ballot is February 12th, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Trahill. Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, we will move to review the next section, Agenda Review, Discussion Items for A, the Consideration of the Annual School District Audit for Physical Year 2019, 2020. Ms. Barbara.
Good afternoon again. I believe the audit starts on page 104. And I'm just going to point out some particular pages to you. So if you will move to page, this is page 134, and it's also page 26 of the actual audit report. The general fund, down near the bottom of page 26, the general fund had a positive growth in its fund balance of $4.6 million. So now we have an ending fund balance of over $34 million. And in our debt service, we have a decrease in our fund balance, which was planned, which is what we want, of over $2 million, and our fund balance is now at $7 million. This is, using our fund balance was how we were able to keep our tax rate at a lower level for a couple of years. All right, moving on to page 174, which is page 66 of the audit report. This is the general fund budget compared to actual. And looking at it, the far column for the expenditures is a negative, then that becomes an issue, and there are no negative amounts, which means we did not overspend our budget. Moving on to page, let's see. Trying to find where this is. Page, oh, and I don't have the actual page, but it's, oh, that's not the right document. I accidentally closed my, my document. All right. It is where the opinion is near the end, and it is on page of the actual audit report. It's on page 106. At the top, it says, "Opinion on each major federal program." "In our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct or material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June 30th, 2020." That's the type of thing we want to hear. And then, near the bottom, the second to the left, last paragraph, the last two sentences, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we considered to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified." That's what we want to hear. And then finally, what I want to discuss, and unfortunately, I did not include it in the board reports, but I will read to you, they had a couple of management comments that appear in a management letter. The first comment was pledged collateral, and the condition was, "As of June 30th, 2020, bank balances exceeded the market value of the pledged collateral and federal deposit insurance, FDIC insurance." And we were, the effect is, the district had a $3.6 million uninsured cash balance as of June 30th, 2020. This is an oversight on my part as well as the bank's part. The bank is used to school districts that have a September 30th year-end, or actually August 30th, whatever date that is, and it was not on their radar to check. I should also be checking that, and I was not checking that on June 30th. It's not anything we can correct, and it's not anything that hurt us. It was, if the bank had gone under, this would have been bad news. The second condition that they found was on the child nutrition fund balance, the condition is presently, "The district has a fund balance in excess of the recommended three-month reserve. The district likely has planned uses for excess amounts that have not been formally designated by the board. Examples of such designations would be for equipment replacements." That's an example. And the effect is, or the criteria, "The Texas Department of Agriculture considers fund balance over three months' average expenditures to be excessive." Well, this, thank goodness for this finding right now, because our student nutrition fund is, is, and it's struggling right now because of our situation with the COVID situation, and we will be living off of that fund balance some this year. Plus, she has equipment that she has to replace. So in a way, this, this particular comment is welcome. Any questions?
I'd like to thank you for your transparency in that, and congratulate you on a clean audit report with no findings.
Thank you.
Yes. Any comments? Is there any reason, Lisa, that we cannot move this to Consent Agenda?
The audit firm will be coming to present.
Okay. Having sat through a couple of those, those presentations before, I mean, how do you feel? Legally, there's no reason we couldn't move it to consent?
You know what, I, can I get back to you on that?
Yes. How does the board feel about that?
I think I'd like to look into that before we decide.
Yeah, if legally, we're okay to move it to consent, would everybody be comfortable? Yeah, let's, let's check on that. I think that you've given a very good report today. We've got the documentation, so we've got ample time to study it and all of that. So if, if possible, let's move that to the Consent Agenda.
All right, I will check.
All right. Thank you. The next item, B, Student Outcome Goals and Monitoring Calendar. Dr. Trahill.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Finch and board. Finally, finally, I could say, we get to talk about this. This little can has been kicked out, and it continues to get kicked out, out there. So first and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Hill and Dr. Corley and the staff. This is something we've kept close to the chest. Just because the statement is not due, and we don't need to do it immediately, they've kept it on the front burner, because this is our business. Our business is not COVID. Our business is education. And so... And so we want to make sure we put the measures in place to meet the needs of our students. And that's first and foremost. So I'm very excited to bring this to you, and I will be leaning on my cohorts as well as any questions may arise. But I wanted to make sure that you knew that House Bill 3 requires the school board to adopt these detailed plans that are developed by the management team to achieve our goal in two key areas, early childhood literacy and mathematic proficiency, as well as a college career and military readiness, otherwise known as CCMR. So you might be hearing that term a little bit, CCMR. Just so you'll know that CCMR is nothing more than talking about the career, college career and military readiness. Each plan should have at least three goals, and one in early childhood literacy aligned to third-grade STAR results that we have. That's the, that's the baseline, the final place where we look as to what did the pro, have we done to meet the needs of our students? The, also looking at the STAR results with regards to the math alignment from early childhood all the way to third-grade STAR results. And then last but not least, the CCMR alignment to graduation and the readiness requirements that we have for our our students. The, in keeping the alignment with the state's 60 by 30, Texas goal, the School Finance Commission recommended establishing a pre-K through 12th grade goal of at least 60% proficiency at TEA meets standards of two key checkpoints along the state's public pre-K and 12. Now, it's important to know that there are three student levels of performances. There are approaches, there's the meets, and there's the masters. And we are focusing on the meets that we're looking at. So when you're looking at the numbers and the percentages, just know that there are representation of student populations that may cut into the approaches side, and they do cut into the masters side. So we are focusing at the meets level and looking at that. The meets helps us pull the approaches up, and the meets help us keep the masters from coming down to that level. We want them to remain at the top of what they can be. So what is the, what is the continuum, while 60% of all students need to meet the state's meet standards at the third-grade level? That's the number that we're aiming for. The other is 60% of all high school seniors graduating without the need for remediation and achieving, number one, either an industry-accepted certification with a living wage, or two, enrolling in a post-secondary education, or the third one is enrolling into the military. The School Finance Commission recommends that each public district require established local develop board goals, which is what we're going to be talking about, and an annual report, their goal progress is publicly, along with any other board goals that are measured, measures the progress of our students. HB3 requires school boards to adopt detailed plans developed by this management team. And once again, the three items that we're looking for so that we keep that at their forefront is early childhood literacy and mathematics proficiency and literacy and mathematics, and the college and career military readiness. Now, the goals, NISD's goal-setting process has been pretty extensive as we move through this, as we're going forward. And I want to either share this with Dr. Hill. Dr. Hill, do you have the document there? Can you share with the board some of the goal-setting processes that we've gone through to arrive to where we are now?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. So, and I did include this document in your board book, and I believe it is on page 231. And it's on page two of that document, if that makes sense. And so we've been meeting regularly about these. In fact, this process began back about a year ago in January of 2020. And so what we wanted to make sure, and we, and just keep in mind, because we haven't had STAR since 2018 results, that we're using that as our baseline data. And so these are five-year goals, but we just have to make sure by the year 2030 that we hit that 60% percentage mark, if that makes sense. And so each increment that you see on both of the goals, or actually on all of the goals, are two to three percentage points in increments, if that makes sense. You'll also note, and I'm going to digress for just a moment, on each goal, you'll see that we have the baseline data. Then we have the original goal that we've set, and if we stick with this original goal, each increment again is in two to three percentage points for each year. If we continue on that path, we will hit that by 2030, we will hit the 60% requirement that the state has set out. But then we wanted to also be realistic, because we didn't take STAR last year. We do have some interim assessments built in this year that we are monitoring on a regular basis. But once STAR results do come in, we typically get those in June, July. The final hits us in August, which is when we will bring this back to you to show you where we are. We've put an actual results line in here, just to kind of see if there was any variant at all. And then lastly, if we need to adjust the original goal that we've established today. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention and make sure that we clearly maybe articulated what each line and their purpose is. And let me see, you'll notice that if there's a blank or an asterisk underneath a specific demographic, that's because there's less than 10 students, and they're not reported due to confidentiality reasons. I do want you to know too, that I know that there are a lot of ethnicity or student subgroup acronyms that may be unfamiliar to you. There is a legend on that background document, just for your, for your reference. And so the data that we're looking at today did come from our taper report. And you'll hear, we'll, we'll talk more about the taper during our public hearing on Thursday evening.
Now, the 14 student groups that she's talking about, if you'll, and she put the, we've got the exhibit in there. It's the second item, the Students' Outcome Goals and Monitoring Calendar, kind of gives you a snapshot. You will notice what we've done is, where you see actual results in 2021 and the actual goal 2021, those two lines go above and beyond what the state template has asked us to kind of provide. We met and discussed this and said, you know what? Because of the COVID backslide, we've got to put systems in place to, to measure exactly what does the actual number look like? And what does that adjust? Now, the percentage that you see there will, will be adjusted, but we are not losing sight. Unless the state changes that end goal, we will not change what our target is. What we have to do is be realistic so that our teachers are adequately prepared and understand the goals and directions that we're going. Our leadership is aligned, we're providing the staff development, providing the resources to meet each one of these. I understand that each one of these 14 items, some of them, we're going to, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not going to be too concerned with because the, that, that group historically has done well. And COVID may not have hit that group, but there's others in this, on this group that we are going to have to put some big energy in looking at. For instance, there's one in there for the, the special education that we have. And we've got to make sure that we address anything that we have with that particular group or the economically disadvantaged student we have. So those are kind of, if you, if you can look at that, that's one thing that we wanted to make sure that you knew. We know the real world, and we're not just putting just goals out there. We want to make sure we know the goals. Unfortunately, those goals, and we have no control over this, were set based on the last time we had some hard fact baseline data from STAR. And we haven't, I haven't, since being here superintendent, seen a result because we haven't tested yet. So I wanted to make sure that Dr. Hill and Dr. Corley and our staff, do we have viable benchmark measures that we can measure on our way getting there? And we absolutely do, but we don't want to change those numbers to those non-traditional local assessment that's been aligned to the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. We want to use what the state is using, and that is that baseline percentage that we have there. With that, President Finch, unless Dr. Young or Dr. Corley, is there anything additional that we need to add? If there's any questions, we can entertain them.
I'd like, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Just from my information, when we speak about those kids, we're not included because of confidentiality. Is that the choice of the parents, or is that the choice of the district?
No, that's actually the state. When you get below a certain number of kids, anonymity becomes a reality. You can't really protect the identity of a student when you get below a student, a set, a set student population. So if you only have seven kids in a group, the state doesn't want you identifying the seven kids through a data, and then the, the organization can put their finger and point and say, those are the kids. So it's not from, it's not local, it's not the district. It comes from the state guidelines with regards to that. Now, that's a great question, though. All kids, Mr. Montoya means all kids. So even if they're not on the data, we're going to get all kids because that one little thub hop might be over at one particular campus that doesn't have as many students. And if we don't pay attention to it in, in third grade, it's going to hit us when they get to sixth grade, seventh grade, because that population is no longer a small group. Now we put the whole population of that, the district-wide into a larger capacity. So, great question, but we will not, just because the state isn't asking for it, we're not going to not be aware of that. Thank you for that question.
And the second question I have is, okay, we're dealing with this pandemic. The goals are pretty well being made so that we can deal with this pandemic. Do you foresee, I know you can't, but have you had the discussion about what happens down the road when things hopefully get back to normal? And how are we going to deal with that effect on those students because of the fact that they were absent from school and not able to participate, you get, you know, the kind of education they need?
Well, thank you for that question. The, I will tell you, one, one item there, Mr. Montoya, that I respectfully want to correct. These goals haven't been set to meet the slide on COVID. This is basically the numbers before COVID. This is without COVID even being there. What we've done is, we've said, we've got a problem here, folks, and we can't sit here and pretend COVID never happened. The state told us, put the goals down, we did. But the state hasn't given us anything as far as how are you going to do with measuring the COVID slide? What we have done at NISD and in conversation with my team here, we added those two lines there because we want to be able to come and give you, our board, viable details about what was the actual number and what did we have to do to adjust that? I actually believe we're doing this, and the state will come back later on and ask us, what have you done to address COVID? So we're, we're providing it locally, we're going to develop it locally, and we're not waiting for the state to tell us, hey, what is, what, how are you adjusting your goals based on the COVID slide? The actual document you see there is basically pre-COVID. And the goals that are there, that would have been the goals that would have been submitted to you for approval way back when the commissioner said, go share it with your boards, and, and the board has approved it. What I told my team, I am not going to present to this board what we would have presented to them prior to COVID because that tells us COVID hasn't hit us. And I'm telling you, all we have to have is a conversation with our classroom teachers, and they know that, that we have some areas of concern, and it's not only just the Nakadoches issue, it's a statewide issue. Matter of fact, commissioner did talk about it yesterday to the team, to my, to our team here, as well as across the state. So, great question, Mr. Montoya. And we've adjusted our document to address that, to make sure we meet the needs of our students by setting realistic goals.
Thank you so much for you and your team to, to look at this. I think it's something that helps us as a board to, to see what we need to look at in terms of numbers. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for the question.
May I add a little more information, Dr. Trujillo, to your first?
Absolutely, yes.
And, Mr. Montoya, just regarding the student group. So for example, I'm looking at the third grade, and maybe I don't have enough Asian students that took the third-grade reading that's reported here, but I do want you guys to know that that student could be counted in multiple subgroups. So they may not show up under the Asian category, but they may show up in economically disadvantaged or special education. So I hope that provides a little more clarity, that they're not just going to show up in one student group for us, they could show up in multiple.
Thank you.
If there are not any more questions, I'd like to make a comment here. And I don't want this, I really don't want to come off as negative, and I hope I don't cry. But I, I just want us to, I want this to be off record because I want teachers to hear this. Teachers, we are encouraged that we are close to meeting our goals, and we're being realistic about that. But we know that when you look at your classroom, you aren't thinking to yourself, ooh, I only had to get 46% to pass, and I've met the goal. We know that. And we also know that we're not content that in 10 years' time, just because the state will be happy if 60% of third graders are reading on grade level, 40% are not. That is appalling. And we want the teachers to know that as a board and as administrators, it is hard for you as a teacher, a third-grade teacher, to only have 33, 35%, and I know this, you know, isn't exact per classroom. But overall, we have 67% third graders who aren't reading at grade level. We know this, we are not content, and we are willing to do whatever you need to help you meet the needs of every student. So again, I don't want to be negative because this is a good report. But I just want teachers to know, we're not satisfied with it because we know you're not. And so whatever you need, we want to help you with this because that's our role, is 100%. I don't care what the state says.
Very well said, Mrs. Montoya.
Thank you.
Very well said. I do have a couple of questions, kind of comments as well. You know, having over the years been completely overwhelmed by data reports that we've seen and in front of this board that are very hard as a board member and, and not from the education industry to be able to read and interpret, I just want to, I just want to say, what you're presenting us is excellent. I've sat in, in, in board workshops through TASB where they talk about, you've got to, you've got to present the information in a simple and understandable way. And I think you have achieved that with the format that we're seeing here. It is, it is excellent, and I know I really appreciate it. It makes it very easy for me to digest.
Thank you, thanks.
I would ask for one thing, being that I'm not from an educational background, and there are some other board members that might share this. Can we put on the bottom of each of these pages a little legend that tells me? I mean, I, I think I can assume on most of these acronyms, but I'm not 100%. So if we could add a legend to the bottom of that that just tells me what each of those acronyms, acronyms stand for, it would be very meaningful. And I think that would help the general public as well, as, as they're going to be very interested in this and our progress.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate the addition of the adjusted goal line. You know, looking at it from, again, from a board perspective, a governance perspective, a community, a parent perspective of having that additional line in there, I think it's very meaningful. I appreciate and want to compliment you guys that, that you realize that it's going to be a tough, a tough road to achieve our ultimate goal, but your, your commitment, and what I'm hearing you commit to is, our ultimate goal is not changing. We may have to change the steps in the middle to get there, but we're going to get there. So I just really want to, again, the foresight in putting that additional line in there, I really appreciate that. The one, the one concern that I would mention, but I also, it's a concern, but I also realize that I believe that we've, we've got the leadership in place that's going to be carefully paying attention to this, is we're not seeing the data on a campus level. is we're not seeing the, the data on a campus level. And one of the things that's very dear to my heart, and, and we, we've kind of alluded to it, is that I want to ensure that all students in Nakadoches uh, are receiving an excellent education. And sometimes when you look at the mean or the average number of all campuses district wide, you can have some really top performing campuses carrying or, uh, offsetting or performing campuses. Um, and I don't want, my, my concern is I don't want this board to lose sight of that and lose sight that we do have campuses that are struggling and that we need all of our campuses. We need all of our students given the same opportunities.
In the term of athletic, just say we are as strong as our weakest.
Yes.
Absolutely. President Finch and I, I, I do hear you loud and clear. Yeah. Being that these are the goals, that they're kind of like an overshock for the Hintart district. And when you look at this and you break it down to the individual campuses, we will find that we have campuses. Let's say that you're looking at the document and this particular campus is one building that's been, uh, being successful. Uh, well, it'll show us, uh, if we, when, when we're having this conversation with principals. Principal, this goal setting is not just goal setting that I'm giving to you as a board. This goal is also, uh, being given to Dr. Hill and, and she's giving it to her team, which means we're talking to our individual principals. And when we put that pen to paper, we're going to find out that a particular leader, when they're looking at their, their percentage, it may not be two or three percent. We may have to be, in order to get where we need to be, that percentage will be well above that percentage, uh, and meeting the needs. And that speaks to what, uh, Ms. Leah Beth was saying, uh, we just now was, we want to make sure that our teachers know, we want to go to the top with everything that we need. Now understand, we are shooting, once again, these are all numbers that are in the meets range. Um, and once we get these kids beyond the meets and our target is going to be masters, it's going to be exactly, uh, where, uh, the district needs to be is, is to be a master school district. And, uh, we will, uh, uh, President Finch, have this same document. Uh, and we can actually even, um, uh, you can actually, we can actually have conversation and look at it, at what it looks like at the campus level, because each one of the campuses will understand, this is the superintendent's goal. But the superintendent's goal is something that is being, uh, um, transitioned down to the particular campuses. So that each campus knows where we need to focus, uh, our resources and our support, uh, for every particular campus, uh, that we have in the district.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I don't know if you're aware that there's a beta program or a higher goal vision being set at BEJ under the leadership of Principal Fonzie, Mr. Z, and at least, uh, Ms. Altier and other reading teachers. It might be interesting for us to hear this positive thing that's going on and kind of make it a challenge for the other. Uh, we, you know, they're, they're setting their goals much higher than what, what our goals are here. And maybe, um, they're talking about that could be beneficial. So at your judgment, when that would be the right time motivational for us and for others, uh, we, maybe it would be good to hear from them.
Absolutely. And you'll know, uh, just because this is coming to you as a board right now, uh, these principals know, uh, and they've been working at, uh, and they've been making this competitive nature between each other. It's interesting listening to our two middle school principals, uh, and, and what they're doing and what they're moving forward. So, uh, exactly what you're saying is, uh, what are their campus leadership doing to make sure that we can meet the needs of the kids? Uh, and I'm having this conversation not only with our board, but, uh, this point forward, also having this communication with some key community, uh, leaders that are here. Because the school district, uh, the performances of the campuses, it has, uh, impacts not just at our schoolhouses. It goes beyond schoolhouse into the community and into our businesses. So we are very aware and, and very, um, uh, ready for the charge to move forward, uh, and be able to beat the, 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 and I don't want to say challenges, I want to cha, I want to meet the opportunities that tomorrow is going to bring for all of our kids and our teachers as well.
Good. Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions, or discussion on this item? Because of the importance of this item to me, uh, tuning out from goals, um, I would like to see this stay on the action agenda. Thank you. Appreciate that. Item C, uh, consideration of purchase of Chromebook devices. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Finch. Board. Dr. Trillo, on page, uh, two thirty-three of your, uh, board packet there, uh, is a description of what administration is proposing, uh, a purchase of nine hundred Chromebooks. If I may, uh, we're, we'll entertain you here just for a second, refresh your memory. Uh, back, uh, at the late, later part of last year, the board approved the purchase, uh, a bulk purchase of computers, Chromebooks, as well as, uh, Apple iPad. Uh, through the Operation Connectivity Program, uh, we purchased, uh, three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven Chromebooks and roughly, uh, nineteen hundred iPads. Uh, since, uh, that purchase, uh, we've had another opportunity come about. We're trying to maximize every dollar and every grant that comes about as a result of the, uh, coronavirus pandemic. Um, so on October, excuse me, December the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, President Trump signed a Consolidated Appropriations Act bill, uh, for twenty twenty-one that was passed by Congress, uh, within the allotted timeframe. And the bill included additional stimulus funding to be available for a local education agency, as well as an extension to, to the end date of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. By doing so, what, what this, uh, what this has offered us an opportunity to be able to purchase, uh, more devices at approximately a seventy-five percent discount of the total cost of the device. So what we are asking is that the, um, board approve, uh, the purchase of the nine hundred Chromebooks for the third through twelfth grade students, uh, to complement, uh, the thirty-four hundred and twenty-seven Chromebooks that we've already purchased. I will be, uh, I will entertain any questions the, uh, board may have about this.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, let me add something like quick, just so the board is aware as we're looking at, uh, we're, we're looking to complement, but we're also, uh, I want to be very transparent with the community when it comes to, this board did a tremendous job of, uh, committing to the purchases of the iPads for all the grade levels, second grade and below. And then, uh, we came to the board and said, you know, we're, we want to get the Chromebooks. And the board unanimously came together and said, let's get the devices that we need for our upper grade levels. What I want to make sure that is clear as we are coming to you again, is, uh, these nine hundred Chromebooks that we're talking about, we're not saying that the board did not act and get us the devices that we needed. And why are we getting more devices? I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to look at something. Once again, we're looking ahead, being proactive, we're moving to online assessments possibly. We've got to look at the, the, the capacity that we have and we have expenditures that may be coming ahead, uh, to us in one or two years. Well, when we came to the board and talked about Chromebooks earlier in the year, we said we can use this amount of Chromebooks, but we also have some older devices that are a little bit newer that will complement and support us. And we would be fine and be able to move forward. However, now that this stimulus fund has come forward, it allows us to really reboot and the board to make a very well-informed decision to say, you know what? In a, in two years or so, we may have to look at new devices because we didn't buy all new Chromebooks. We kind of circulated some, uh, some slightly used in, uh, devices, but we're talking a year, two years down the road. So now with these additional devices, uh, it will help us make sure that grades, third grade through twelfth grade, uh, we've got devices there that are, uh, age appropriate as far as, uh, won't age out. Uh, and we won't have to be talking about a replenishing cycle that doesn't kind of align themselves. It also allows us to be very proactive in the measure of the state. And if you see the figures that are put, being pushed around across the state, uh, online testing can, and wind up costing districts anywhere between three and four million dollars down the road to get them la, launched in that direction. Well, that's if you're not one-to-one, that's if you don't have the devices, if you don't have the hotspots. Uh, so we're doing a lot of those things now, uh, you know, if, uh, uh, through these stimulus opportunities to improve what we put in the hands of our kids. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, yes, we're using this to com, to complement our devices, but we're also looking at, um, uh, the devices that we did not touch. The, the Chromebooks that we said were, uh, still, uh, operational or able to work, these will, 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 will assist us in that direction. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Martin, I have a question. The budget impact is two hundred ninety-seven thousand. The, the license, the white glove service and the warranty amount to about a hundred and eleven thousand. Is that something we're going to have to do every year after the initial, uh, investment?
No, sir. These, these, uh, the white glove service is a one-time, uh, service, uh, to the district. The warranty is a, a three-year warranty, which is about almost the lifespan of the device. The warranty covers more than just, uh, uh, it, it, it covers quite a bit, uh, for the district as far as repairs and, uh, the premium warranty, uh, part of it. So it, it's a one-time purchase.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I have some questions pretty much close to Coach, Mr. Montoya. And I know the Quail elaborates, executed on the phone out, however, I have to invest myself as well. We purchased, uh, three thousand four hundred on my account as twenty-nine, but you said twenty-seven Chromebook. I remember before the year end, TJR came to the board and purchased a lot of Chromebook, Chromebook as well. And now we ordering nine hundred more, which is added together would be, with the, of course, we have one thousand six hundred and fifteen iPads. It comes to total of five thousand zero four four devices. And we were told that all the teachers, the students and, uh, basically office workers, they have all the tools that they need. Now we having that nine hundred, uh, nine hundred more iPad plus the iPad we have had in the past. And we have to buy so-called warranty for those as well, correct?
Correct.
How many of those iPads are actually in the use of the students total?
I'm sorry, Coach, I, I missed the last part of your question.
How many of those iPads and Chromebooks are in the use currently in the hands of, uh, students?
Uh, one hundred percent, Coach.
One hundred percent. So therefore, what we had in the past and nine hundred more would be extra, like Dr. Troyal said for, uh, in the future, correct?
Okay, I'm, I'm misunderstanding. Let me go back then. Uh, so when we, uh, did, when we originally signed up for Operation Connectivity, the district actually requested forty-five hundred Chromebooks, but based on TEA's formula, uh, they allotted us three thousand four hundred and twenty-four, and that's because it was a bulk purchase. Everybody in the state, uh, was pretty much trying to participate in this program because it was such a, a great deal on the devices. So originally we, we requested forty-five hundred Chromebooks, we only, we got thirty-five, thirty-four hundred. So what we had, what we did was we used some of the, uh, existing devices that we had purchased prior to this, this, uh, Operation Connectivity coming into place. What we will be doing with these nine hundred, actually putting the new, the new, the new devices in the hands of the students, these nine hundred, uh, to complete out our, uh, our first, uh, initiative. Then we will turn around with the ones that we have that are, uh, extra or in excess, which go, right now, some of our kids have, uh, Chromebooks, uh, two thousand seventeen models, two thousand eighteen models. This will at least put a, uh, twenty-twenty model or a twenty-twenty-one model in every, every student, third through twelfth grade, uh, in their hands. So that, that's the goal of trying to, uh, leverage and take advantage of this opportunity with funding to buy the additional nine hundred. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, it does. But I, I am questioning, not your operation, I'm questioning for my own information, okay? It's not, uh, so-called net picking. Uh, we have currently with that nine hundred, we have five thousand nine hundred and forty-four Chromebook, one thousand six hundred and fifteen iPad, total of seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine devices available. With, if you purchase that, uh, nine hundred, correct?
Yes, sir.
That is excluding what we have had from seventeen and eighteen, correct? Twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen.
Ms. Morris, I'm going to have to ask you to help me on that question.
Trying to look to see, um, how many students that we have, but, um, and to look and see exactly how many twenty-twenty's that we have. Because that is the, what was previously purchased and then what has been purchased. So I do know that right now, the campuses that are using the two thousand seventeen and eighteen's are TJR, BQJ, Fredonia and Carpenter. So Nettie and Ray and the high school and the two middle schools all have the twenty-twenty's. So I just kind of added the students up at those campuses that are using the older devices. And that's how I got the number rounded up a little bit for new students that are enrolled or, um, uh, to make sure we're prepared for new students that hopefully our enrollment goes back up.
Okay. I, I simplify my question. With seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine devices, which is included Chromebook and iPad, new, brand new update, correct?
Coach, are you including the teacher devices in that, in that number?
Okay, let's go back. We had three thousand four hundred and twenty-five, uh, twenty-nine or twenty-seven iPad purchased earlier, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we also purchased one thousand six hundred and fifteen, uh, I'm sorry, that was Chromebook, iPad, one thousand six hundred and fifteen, correct?
Correct.
With per, purchasing nine hundred more iPad, uh, Chromebook, correct?
Yes, sir.
At Chromebook and iPads together would be seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine, so, which is brand new. That is excluding what was purchased in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, I mean, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
I get fifty-five, thirty-two.
For some reason, I have fifty-nine, but maybe it's a prime.
So you, we originally purchased how many Chromebooks?
Three thousand four hundred and twenty-nine iPad was, I thought it was twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
And iPads?
iPad was one thousand six hundred and fifteen.
Okay. And we're doing nine hundred more.
Yeah, we're purchasing nine hundred more.
So does that three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven include what TJR came back and added? You know, you said TJR.
They watched, they watched.
So that comes to five thousand nine hundred and forty-two new devices, correct?
Correct. Plus the iPad, the iPad, one thousand six hundred.
No, that, that's already included in there.
I put nine hundred, add nine hundred?
Yeah, if we did, if we did three thousand four hundred and twenty-nine Chromebooks, one thousand six hundred fifteen iPads and then another nine hundred Chromebooks, that would take us to five thousand nine hundred and forty-two new devices.
Okay, five thousand nine hundred and forty-two new devices, okay. With that, what are we going to do with the iPad, I mean iPad or Chromebooks that are purchased so-called? You say this probably soon would be obsolete. What we want to do with those, are they?
Michael, let me answer this question if you would mind. Uh, what we have is, in order to make this happen, remember, we went back to campuses that have written grants and written, uh, they had in initiatives going on campuses. Uh, for instance, Carpenter had written a number of grants and they were using both Chromebooks and iPads. That was well before I arrived to Nakadoches. We also have, uh, uh, We also have, uh, a couple of other elementary schools that had, uh, some initiatives that are using those. Uh, the leadership that are there, based on the instructional direction that we're looking at, the other thing that we have, uh, that we might be able to look at is looking at those programming, but be able to use that through, uh, the, the leadership and myself visiting with the campuses about those initiatives. The other thing we have to realize is, we do have a couple of things that are, uh, in the horizon that we might need to look at, which may look at virtual classrooms, uh, virtual, um, uh, virtual opportunities, uh, for students that are outside the traditional school setting. Um, I think Ms. Apt has, uh, charged me to continue to look at that, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Ms. Apt? Uh, so, uh, we, what, what my goal though is with this is, number one, how do we put the best and the latest and the newest devices in the hands of our kids? And, um, these grants that have been written, were written two, three, four years ago, the devices were good during this transition time, but I'm looking at two years from now, twenty-twenty-two, what did it look like and what's the impact and implications on this board when we move towards online testing where everyone needs to be able to grab a device and meet the needs that the states have? Uh, and, uh, right now with this, uh, initiative and this, uh, opportunity, we're able to get pretty close with that five thousand nine hundred and forty-two, uh, we're, we're gonna be shy, uh, just over a hundred, uh, new devices, uh, if, uh, if we're, we're there. That means we can use our current devices to supplement current instructional settings that have written grants and, uh, and have a commitment, uh, and principals, they're chopping at the bit, trust me, they're constantly, uh, visiting with Dr. Hill, uh, we getting my Chromebooks back so we can put it back in our programs. Uh, we also have some middle schools that are not using, uh, the iPads, but are program-specific that need the iPads. So we've used that to go that direction as well, so, uh, that kinda gives us some, some purpose of what we're looking for, those older devices, although they're not outdated, uh, they can provide us some opportunity or some, uh, ready testing, they can have with them students, uh, pro, uh, program specifics that have written grants, and also the initiative that, uh, I've been charged with, looking at, uh, opportunities for virtual instruction, uh, opportunities for students, um, in Nacogdoches and beyond.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I am in favor of the direction we're going. Uh, because one of my campaign promises was that our students should receive the best education possible, and that's a part of their education in the future and currently. Uh, that is my campaign promises. Uh, at the same time, I was promised that I would be stored on taxpayers' money at the same time.
Yes, absolutely.
So I am trying to bet on both sides and, uh, I'm winning, I think I'm winning on both sides.
Oh, yes.
Operating, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And just, just so you'll know, Michael, uh, would you, what would be the cost, the full-fledged cost, if we bought nine hundred computers without this, uh, without this twenty-five percent?
So the actual budget, uh, impact is the two hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred dollars that we're asking the board to approve, however, uh, are, we're anticipating that we're gonna get these at twenty-five percent of cost, which would be, uh, an actual expense to the district of fifty, fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars.
There you go, Coach.
Nine hundred Chromebooks for fifty-six thousand dollars, which is a heck of a deal.
One is made, one is kept.
Not only I'm clarified, I guess the puppy would be clarified too.
Yes, sir.
Would you clarify one thing? When it comes to money, I, it's the only thing when I pay attention with math, but I want, um, so the stimulus act that you mentioned at the beginning, Mr. Martin?
Mm-hmm.
It guarantees that we get this at twenty-five percent, is that what you're saying, or is it gonna pay for this?
Yes, ma'am, it's a reimbursement-type program, so what, what happens is, the district, uh, buys them at, at the two hundred ninety-seven, the full cost, and then we turn around and apply, just like we did with the earlier, uh, Chromebooks and iPads, we turn around and apply for the reimbursement of seventy-five percent of the total cost.
Great, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Martin, I want to give you a, a, a positive, uh, pat on the back, because I'm always asking, what percent are we saving? And you told us that, but Dr. Uh, Trillo then said, well, let's, what does it cost us out of our pocket? And that's, so those are, that's two, two complimentary things that we need to know and, and our public needs to know, so that's one important. What I worked it out is we're paying three hundred and thirty-three dollars per Chromebook, does that sound about right?
It sounds about right, yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, we're not buying them for three hundred and thirty, we're buying them for one quarter of that, so that is, uh, a good deal, everybody go for that. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate that, and, uh... Never have done this out of our budget to get all the things that we're, we're just instantaneously doing this in less than a year, so that's wonderful. The, the last thing is just a comment, general thing, uh, you know, there's a lot of libraries in this school district, and there are a lot of librarians that need any kind of updated iPads or Chromebooks. So if we have, uh, some that are just lying around in a storeroom, they could probably find a place to use them for reading comprehension or whatever while the kids are in the, in the classrooms, uh, so they don't have to bring their own with them. So just, just a, a thought, uh, whatever, whatever way that they can be done utilized to help our students, wherever that is, that's, we don't want them to be on, on, in a storeroom, we want them to be where kids can use them, students can use them, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Germaine, I will add, uh, that, uh, Ms. Morris and I have been in contact with, uh, some of these vendors, a lot of which would, uh, do a trade-back or a, uh, a credit program with us to keep our, keep the latest and greatest, uh, devices in the hands of kids. So if we get to a point that, that we have so many that we couldn't, uh, give the libraries and things of that nature, there is buyback programs that we've researched, uh, that we might be interested in participating in.
Well, Ms. Barbrick would not let that happen, she's gonna make sure that, uh, right, Ms. Barbrick? She looking at reselling auctions, she's constantly with us, do we need that? Can we sell it back? She's trying to keep us, uh, responsible with the finances as well.
Uh, Mr. Martin, will there be any additional expenses associated with this purchase that we should anticipate for accessories, uh, or anything?
No, ma'am, this particular one, uh, we've included, uh, pretty much everything in the quote there, we've got the three-year premium warranty, uh, included with the white glove service, the, uh, the license for the Chrome life, for the Chrome, uh, operating system, and so we ha, and, and the device itself. So in this particular quote, this particular purchase, we've included, uh, the, everything that we need.
It has a case and everything?
For these nine hundred.
Ms. Apt, that includes the case?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Martin, I might ask as well, I know that since we distributed or, uh, the, as we've been moving to this one, one-to-one device, I know I've had, uh, I've seen some teachers that are kinda out there running kinda GoFundMe campaigns, that type of thing, to buy mice or, or mouses or mice for, for the students, for the, yeah, for the Chromebooks. Um, are we sure that we've got, our students have what they need to, to be successful in using this technology?
Ms. Fitch, uh, that is the first I've heard of that, but, uh, Ms. Morris and I, uh, Dr. Hill and, and Ms. Barbrick will get together and we will find out if our, uh, if our kiddos, our teachers need, uh, more equipment and, uh, maybe coming back to you at a later time, such as mice.
All right. Any, uh, any other questions on this item?
You know, just for, uh, Roman, each, each Chromebook cost us two hundred and twenty-five.
Two hundred and twenty-five, each Chromebook is two hundred and twenty-five.
All right.
Nine hundred divided by the price.
My, two, it's two ninety-five, isn't it?
Two twenty-five.
Did you say?
All right, so, uh, any, are there any, uh, concerns about moving this to consent agenda?
Nope.
Reverend, uh, and Mindy, would you guys be okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, so let's move item, uh, C to the consent agenda, please. Item D, uh, consideration of purchase of premium warranty for Chromebooks, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam President, on page two thirty-six of your board packet, uh, we are requesting that the board, uh, purchase, uh, premium warranty for the three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven, uh, Chromebooks, uh, purchased earlier, uh, for our students. This is a, uh, warranty, uh, with unlimited occurrences or claims, it covers, uh, accidentals. Uh, if we, when we look at the cost, uh, average cost of a, uh, Chromebook repair, it's anywhere from fifty dollars to two hundred dollars, depending on, uh, what has to be repaired. Uh, just as an example, a keyboard is seventy-nine dollars, a screen repair is about fifty dollars. Uh, what this will do is also, uh, help our parents, uh, where that they won't have to come up with the money for, uh, any type of repairs for the, uh, Chromebooks that we have issued to the students. So again, we are, uh, asking the board to approve a, a purchase of a premium warranty in the amount of two hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars.
This is, as you mentioned earlier, it's for three years, correct?
For three years, yes, sir.
And that's Chromebook only? Chromebooks only?
That's Chromebook only, and I'll, I'll, I'll refresh, uh, everybody's memory again that, uh, we've, uh, the board has approved a previous purchase of, uh, iPad, uh, accidental warranty or a warranty, uh, previously, so, uh, we've also covered our iPad, our iPads for now are also covered, uh, under the same type of, uh, warranty.
Any questions, discussions on this item?
But, Mr. Martin, those warranties when you purchase immediately starts, correct?
Yes, sir, they immediately start.
Okay. Uh, just a curiosity again, just that, being penny-fenceer, year of the summertime, how many students we anticipate using that item? Or another word, can we wait until beginning of the school year purchases so the whole school year they can use it, because summertime, probably majority of them don't know use it? Am I making sense?
We, we are, we, we still have, uh, kids who will be attending summer school, Coach, our intent is to, at the end of the school year, to collect the, the, uh, devices back and do an inventory and make sure that there is no damage and that they're clean for the, uh, following year. I, I will also note that, uh, oh, just over the Christmas break, Ms. Morris reported to me that there were over twenty, uh, iPads that came back with, uh, busted screens.
So what was the cost?
There was no, there was no cost because, uh, we had purchased the, uh, premium warranty.
So we're gonna collect all of these devices for summer and then check out again for those going to summer school, is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
Storage is gonna be a headache.
We don't know what happens with our students, there's movement and all of that, and retaining property would be astronomical, uh, and a great loss, uh, in the, in my previous experience with technology with students. If we don't collect those, uh, then we can also re-image, uh, Kirsten and her, uh, team can re-image based on new instructional directions and some of the things that we're looking at, and so, uh, yeah, storage is gonna be, uh, critical when, when we do that.
Right, any additional discussion or questions on this item? Any opposition, uh, or anybody opposed to moving this item to consent agenda? Right, so we'll move it to consent. Item E, consideration of bids for Mike Moses HVAC and re-roof bond project, Mr. Martin?
Thank you again, President Fitch, uh, on page two thirty-eight of your board packet, uh, administration, um, on January the fourteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-one, the district accepted bid proposals for the Mike Moses re-roofing and HVAC replacement project. Uh, the administration is recommending, uh, the lowest bidder in compliance with the bid regulations, which would be Cox Contractors to complete, uh, this portion of, uh, the project, uh, for the amount of one million eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Be happy to entertain any questions you all may have.
How does that compare to what we had budgeted for that proj, uh, that, the construction, not the total project cost, as we've discussed recently, but actual construction, is that coming in above, under, where we at?
That, I'm going to defer that question to, uh, Mr. LaRue or either Mr. Curtis, I see, uh, they're both on, uh, through my conversations with them, it sounded like we were pretty close.
Hi, uh, Armie, uh, hold your, there, Armie, sorry, uh, this is for the roof project, Mike Moses, we had one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, uh, for the roof, there are other projects at, out there, uh, reminder that both of these projects are phase one, we, we will be working all, starting from right now for the next two years on these projects.
All right, so, okay, so, Ralph, just, I, I wanna make sure that we're very, very clear and everybody understands what we're saying here. For the construction costs, not project costs, but the actual construction cost for the HVAC and re-roof project at Mike Moses, we had budgeted one point six five million?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we're coming in, then that's just for construction, so we're coming in under budget, correct?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay.
The numbers for this project, they were not on the Chromebook, I mean, on the book? Okay.
Just got them in yesterday.
Didn't came in yesterday.
Could you repeat the numbers again?
The number is one, one million eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
So six hundred thousand savings.
About a six hundred, okay.
This is Dr. Germaine, I wanna thank you and Cindy and all those that are doing such a good job handling all these projects, and, uh, I don't know how you keep all the balls up in the air, but, uh, just don't drop them on your feet, uh, but, uh, I, I heard you also like to cut down trees after snowstorms, or are you cutting?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think my views on snow are appropriate for public.
We'll try not to have any more snow this year, okay? We'll try, if we do, it'll be some snow.
On a more serious note, I, I do need to make sure we're all clear with, with Mr. Curtis's recommendation letter for the total budget cost for the project of one million three hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and ninety-five.
Okay, wait, so, taking us, so give me that number again first, Ralph.
Michael, did they get these letters?
Yes, yes, sir, let me go over that. So Cox, the Cox bid was, uh, one million eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, the HVAC controls were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the, uh, architect and engineer design fees were ninety-one thousand dollars. So the total project cost, and I apologize, I didn't, uh, bring this, uh, bring this out, was, is one thou, one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, that is the total project cost.
Still, still well... So it's not a six hundred thousand dollar savings?
More like a three hundred thousand.
Okay.
And that, and that's exactly what I'm talking about, when, guys, when I say we wanna have transparency and, and everybody needs to understand exactly what we're saying, what's project, what's construction and, and so forth, yes. So to reiterate, and Ms. Barbrick, I'd love to have you chime in on this too, because I wanna make sure that we're all around... because I want to make sure that we're all around the table and all understand in our agreement with the numbers as the board understands them. And that is that we, we had $1,650,000 budgeted, and we're, and we're about to spend $1,359,295, and that will complete the project in its entirety. There are no additional costs coming down the road?
Correct. For, for that phase, the next phase at Mike Moses has additional funding, a separate line on him in the budget.
Okay. Ms., okay. So, Mr. Martin, is that your, do you understand and agree that to be true as well?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Ms. Barbrick?
I'm just, I'm hearing what I'm told. I wrote it down.
President Finch, if I may, this information is, again, hot off the press. It will be in your board book for the meeting on Thursday evening.
All right. Thank you. Because you, you understand that we're...
Yes.
The scenario here, we're getting a lot of numbers thrown at us, and we don't have it in board book at this time.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
All right. Yes, Dr. Germain?
Ralph, I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
The Cox, who's going to do the, the roof at Mike Moses, do they use a lot of local labor?
Yes, that's a, that's a local, local roofing company.
That's wonderful to know, and, and I really appreciate Cox hiring locals so we can have, particularly under COVID. We, we keep, been keeping a lot of people busy through COVID, and praise, praise the Lord, that y'all are doing a good job and getting it to people that it'll get back to, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item?
Pam, this is, I, I would prefer to leave this in discussion on, on the agenda for next week since we still need to see numbers.
I agree with you, Mindy. Is everybody comfortable with that?
A little bit.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. So that'll bring us to item F, which is consideration of bids for Fredonia Elementary School Drive Bond Project. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, ma'am. Page 239 of your board packet, administration received bids on January 14, 2021 for Fredonia New Driveway and Parent Drop-Off Project. The total cost of the project is $619,154.65. The administration is recommending Drury and Wheaton LLC as the lowest responsive base bid for this project. The numbers breakdown is following. Drury and Wheaton LLC's bid is $546,154.65. We have architect and engineering fees of $33,000, and we have owner contingency of $40,000 to equate to $619,154.65.
I think Lisa's checking on some of those numbers. But Fredonia is one number. The conversion of Fredonia into a pre-K is one number, So again, this, this is the first part of that, the parent drop-off road. And then it just defines how much money we have left to convert that school as we work with Dr. Germain.
Okay.
Our team.
And this, this project's Army Curtis is working on, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
Questions or discussion on this item? For the same reason, we don't have those final numbers in our board packet, we would like to keep this, I believe, on our action agenda, correct?
Yes.
All right. That'll take us to item G, consideration of rescheduling the March 2020 Agenda Review Meeting and Regular Board Meeting. Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, President Finch and board. The Nacogdoches ID Spring Break is March 8 through the 12, 2021. Traditionally, the March Agenda Review and Regular Board Meeting are rescheduled to the fourth week of the month, which would be the Monday, March 22, for the Agenda Review, and the Thursday, March 25, for the regular meeting. The administration's recommendation is the board reschedule the March 2021 Agenda Review Meeting to Monday, March 22 at noon, and the March 2021 Regular Board Meeting to Thursday, March 25 at 5:00 PM.
Any discussion on this item? And would everybody be, would it be okay to move this to consent agenda?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So we'll do that. All right. That's bringing us close to the item of our agenda for today. We do have an executive session on the agenda. Last, we may need some help, some extra help from you in the boardroom on this.
Not a problem.
All right. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, as allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussions would take place when the board reconvenes. It is now 1:38 PM. Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, ma'am.
You would think we would reconvene at, an open meeting at what time?
I would say 2, 2 o'clock.
All right. So for the public tuning in, whether it's via Zoom, we will not reconvene any earlier than 2:00 PM. Thank you, thank you. Reconvene the meeting at 2:01 PM. We have one item left on our agenda, item seven. I'll accept a motion.
Ms. Mindy, I'm if we adjourn.
Thank you, Mindy. Do we have a second? A second by Dr. Germain? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. All right. You guys have a great weekend, and we'll see you next Thursday.
Safe travels, Dr. Trujillo.
Thank you, thank you.
Take care, Dr. Hill.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you.